Good evening, everyone. Tonight is January 26, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee, and I'll call this meeting to order. And I just want to make the statement that consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And for the record, I just want to say who is here. We have Maria Puglisi, our Recording Secretary, Greg Brock, our Assistant Superintendent, Katie Provost, our Special Education Director, Superintendent Lummis, Amy Cam, who is our Mental Health Coordinator, Keith Minio, School Committee Member, Melissa Texara-Prince, School Committee Member, myself, Kathy Clancy, Laura Wiesen, School Committee Member, Bill Melvin, School Committee Member, Mayor Greg Verga, also a School Committee Member when he's with us at this forum, and Gary Frisch, the School CFO. And all that said, I would like you to join me in the saluting flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, sorry to interrupt. You just want to say for the record that I'm here virtually.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you very much. Samantha Watson is joining us virtually today.
Thank you.
If someone could send me another link to the one I have, this seems to not be a participant.
I just promoted you to a panelist.
Great, thank you.
All right. So the next order of business is oral communications, and I will read the rules on oral communication. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subject. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the Recording Secretary. The School Committee Chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. So if there are any members of the public that would like to speak under public comment, now is the time to raise your hand or hit *9. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the recognitions. Anybody have any recognitions they would like to bring up? Quiet times. Okay, sorry. All right. I do not believe we have a Student Advisory Council member present this evening. So we will wait till next meeting to get a report on Gloucester High School. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items people want to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? I assume we want to remove the approval of the outer state field trip or the JROTC to Daytona, Florida, for discussion of some of the questions we had at the last meeting.
So I'll give you an update, but we won't be approving it quite yet because we haven't gotten the finalized protocols for what should happen. A couple of updates, though. One question was, was it $12,000 per student? Pretty sure it wasn't that. It wasn't that. It's the whole cost of the program. There are going to be 11 students total. So we're still quite good at having one chaperone. But, or and, in terms of COVID, as Katie raised and wanted me to pull up on, we are now working, I met Sergeant DeBois quickly and also James Cook, President of Cook about it. We're working on what to do, what to plan for, prepare for in the case that a student or more gets COVID during the shift. Okay? So we'll report back to you at the next meeting, okay, about that, with decisions, looking at additional chaperones, looking at what we would, you know, how we would communicate with parents, be clear about any responsibilities they may have. In addition, just in case the child comes out with COVID, you want to be sure that anything we put in place doesn't exclude any families from actually going or already hoping to go. So those are some of the things we're looking at. But essentially, the biggest question is if a child gets COVID while they're they can't travel back, obviously, by plane or by the charter bus, so they have to stay there longer and then, you know, maybe precautions or preparations for food instead. Again, that can be additional chaperone. We're working through the details. We'll come back to you in the next meeting.
Okay, so that is removed from the consent. We need to take a vote. And Melissa tells me, because we're all present, now with Sam there. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Maria, please.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verga.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Mayor Person Clancy.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. The next item of business is deliberations on educational issues in the Superintendent's Report. And the first item is an update on district-wide social-emotional learning and mental health support by Amy Cam.
Amy, cheers. Okay. Most everyone in the room and on the call you know is Amy Cam. Longtime staff member colleague, leader in district. One of the of the few things I've done right so far, probably on top of this, is cajoling and convincing Amy to take on a new position this year, which is Director of Mental Health Support and Social Emotional Learning across the district. You're going to hear tonight what she's been able to do in a very short amount of time to really put us on a, well, first of all, rapidly sort of improve and coordinate our service and support, but also really put us a path towards ongoing improvement. It's, as we know, the probably the single most important area that we've been trying to address in our schools because of the pandemic. It's raised everyone's awareness even higher than it was, thankfully, because it probably needs to be addressed and supported more than it was. Not only Gloucester, but across the board. And so, but Amy is the right person because, first of all, her skill or experience, her drive, but also how well she knows people in the community and district, in the surrounding area. And we are benefiting, our students are benefiting, our staff are benefiting in a very significant way with the leadership. So really pleased that Amy here would like to give you an update on some of the steps that were made when she's leading across the district.
Thank you.
I will.
More?
My job, no, that's not all. And my job is to give the presentation.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you for having me. But also, thank you because for the last two years, I've listened to school committee meetings pretty regularly, and it's obvious that all of you put mental health and social emotional learning of our students as your priority. And I, I and everyone appreciate that. So thank you for that. And I've been muted, you know, on these other things. So now I get to tell you all about, all about what's the exciting things that are happening.
Some talk to Amy who's watching and wants to say things.
Yeah, like, and I'm texting the answers. So Greg and James, and they're not, like, telling you the answers. So it's a little bit frustrating. All right, so next, I want to thank Superintendent Lummis because under his direction, he saw the need not only to increase the number of support, support people, clinical staff in our district, but also recognize that it's not just about people, go to the next slide. It's not just about adding people, that we need a vision, a strategy, and coordination of these people. We have amazing district staff. We have 27. We have 17 schools, I mean, 13 school adjustment counselors, seven school psychologists, three district-wide BCBAs, which are Behavior Certified Behavior Analysts or Certified Behavior Analysts. I mean, in addition to that, which you guys, you probably, I don't know if you knew how many people we have, but we also have other services. We have a school-based health center with a mental health clinician, a nurse practitioner, and a wellness coordinator, which is a great resource. We also have a student assistance program, which I started like years ago, and it's still in existence, so I love that. And that is an embedded mental health clinician and it's at O'Malley. And then we have the graduate level interns. So we have a lot of staff. But my role has allowed us to coordinate that, provide clinical oversight, look at policies and procedures, standardization, best practices, and really, you know, I think, as I saw like seven kids a week in my previous job because I was the only adjustment counselor for like a lot of years at Gloucester High, I always tried to change the big pieces, and I now get to do that. So that's like super exciting to me. So now we'll talk about the priorities that I set, but I also got feedback and I've also just gathered through the years. So there's four areas, and I'll go over the priorities and then the core components of each and then kind of like an example of what we're doing in each. And they intersect. So some things hit more than one priority, obviously. So building skills, building social-emotional skills that prepare for life, that's a top one. And you'll hear that in the SEL curriculum, K through 12. Promoting mental health and wellness through early identification and education. So that's becoming more systematic in how we identify kids early and support them before it's an acute crisis. Leveraging community partnerships. I'll talk a lot more about that, but that's really recognizing that we cannot support every kid's complexity within four walls of a school. We need community input and partners, and we need to do it in really creative ways. And you'll hear about that. And then using data to strengthen mental health and also to guide decisions. So the social-emotional skills, when I was looking for a curriculum or a program, these are the core components that I was looking for. That'd be K through 12, that the skills build on each other, that they don't get it in third grade and then not until 10, that it's reinforced, that it's repetitive exposure, and that it's developmental. And it had to have the five core competencies of CASL, which is the Leaders on Social Emotional Learning. So those are self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. So those are the areas. When we talk about SEL, that is what we want to develop the kids in all our students. And then the program needed to be not just universal, so not just every kid gets it, but if kids need more, there's a tier two so they can get more intensive services, and a tier three. And this program has all those. So it doesn't just teach to the general, to every kid in the classroom. It also has interventions that, when kids need more.
But just like we do in our, we use, we talked about a lot about this in elementary, too. It's also, and also in our middle school as well. But also that's cool. Tier one, for those who don't know, is what every child gets. It's the basic instruction every day for every child, no matter who you are, sort of thing. Tier two is some additional supports. And then tier three is often confused as special education, but it's not. Tier three is more specialized instruction, but that can support a student who has special education or general education. But it means because of their needs, because of where they are, in order for them to advance, they need tier three or specialized instruction. So that's tier one, two, and three. Tier one being everybody, instruction everybody gets. It's like a general curriculum. And then one level of intervention, then another level. So.
Do you want to?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yeah, that's fine. It's fine, it's fine with me.
Of course, absolutely.
Go ahead.
How does, and I'm sure you're probably going to hit on this in the next couple of slides, how does this get rolled out? Does this get rolled out at the elementary school level first? And then?
So we are going to be hitting on that, but it is a phased implementation as we are piloting it.
I just wanted to sound smart.
No, that was, you sounded very smart. And I, okay. So I'm going to, so I selected Trails as a pilot. It is based in cognitive behavior role therapy and mindfulness. And it's just, it's a, I've gotten really good positive feedback. It's really skills that we all need, you know, stopping negative thoughts, you know, challenging your thoughts, looking at the interconnectedness between thoughts, behaviors, and feelings. So it's, and you'll see it's aligned in a lot of the other things that we're doing. So, and then tier two is for groups. So when I said that, so if you do a classroom presentation and you recognize that someone might need a little more on anxiety support, there's an eight-session group for anxiety. There's also one for depression. There's one for mixed, there's one for COVID. So it has a tier two intervention around cognitive thinking, trials. We have activation exposure. Those are just some of the core concepts. And then tier three is, they have like a suicide intervention, and we're working district-wide on implementing that anyway. That's not how I or the superintendent really see tier three. It's really more intensive services. It's usually individually, you know, individual modality, and it might be more frequent. So, so we're looking at that. Then tier three isn't as great as tier one, two. So this is just an example of the modules. So they have 20 classroom presentations throughout the years, like each year. And each module hits on the CASL's five competencies. All those skills I said, social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, and decision-making skills. And it's obviously doesn't start with challenging your negative thought process in kindergarten. It's developmentally appropriate. All right, next.
But this is, I'll say on this, is that something that Amy's made a job of impressing upon me. But what's powerful to me is, I mean, these are areas that all of us, you know, can benefit from and do benefit. And many of us have just picked up some of them along the way because we're older. But the ability to help our students with, I know, very specifically about these skills is one of the pieces that really sets them up for success in life. They need to be contributing to community members. So really powerful to see this in a very concrete way and very helpful for both our staff to define them, but it also resources to help teach them.
So then getting back to Bill Melvin's question, this is how we're rolling it out. We had about 40, over 40 staff trained, and we're piloting it at Plumco Veterans, O'Malley, and Gloucester High School. And hopefully, we'll get back lots of feedback on what they think about it and hope to begin implementation, full implementation in 2023, 2024. So we'll expand the pilot next year, continue to assess and see how it goes. Go ahead.
I have a question. I just don't know if it's common to me.
It might come, certainly not.
Define piloting. So how does this work in the school? Are you having a special class for this? Is it going to be taught by a math teacher one week? And how is this implemented as far as into the classroom through the pilot program?
So I forgot, so I left out that one sentence. So the adjustment counselors are really taking charge. I think we were all cognizant that our teachers are tapped, and to ask them to do one more thing just wasn't going to be helpful this year. So they're taking the charge, and we're really looking at readiness, who's ready, who wants to do this, and going that way. So it's, it looks different in every school.
Is it a group?
So it's like a, like, two classes might be doing it in one school. You know, so it's like grades usually. Yeah.
Piloting the tier one component.
Yeah, that's a tier. No, and the tier two.
Yeah, and the tier two.
Yeah.
But you do it as a class? Or do you?
Yeah, it's as a class.
As a class.
As a class. The tier one is as a class. The tier two groups, I'm going to talk more about that, but I got a grant, and we're going to use that, the tier two model as an intervention in that.
So at this point, adjustment counselors, I think I was just right. If they're going into, say, an elementary class or middle school class and teaching those models you saw to the students, the teachers are observing, or they're often learning, and they can get feedback, that sort of thing. We're a little more familiar with it. So we, luckily, you've got to figure out as you go forward is who will take primary responsibility for teaching. And probably will be, ultimately, probably become a, you know, could be, like, a classroom teacher, the homeroom teacher, that sort of thing. Maybe just some advisory lessons as well here at the high school. But that's what we're working through as we gain familiarity with.
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
Thanks. And just correct me if I'm wrong. Adjustment counselors are already doing some skill building in classrooms at the elementary school level. Is that right? So this isn't sort of like a new, a new idea that adjustment counselors would go in and do some teaching?
Right, so you're absolutely right. That's what a lot of them are doing. I think when I did an SEL needs assessment, and I did, I did meet with everyone, every principal, every adjustment counselor, every psychologist alone, everyone's doing something kind of different. So we're trying to make it so that there's, every kid's getting what we think is are the skills in a, like, a really comprehensive way. But you're right.
No, so I was trying to respond to sort of Melissa that, like, the idea
Oh, yeah.
of the adjustment counselors coming in to sort of teach some social-emotional skills is something that's happening already. But absolutely, having something that's consistent is really important.
Yeah, yeah. So they are comfortable with that, and they want to help the teachers because sometime, you know, so I think that's a great point.
I was just trying to figure out this was a class and not because the topic seemed so important. So like, is there a time set aside for the day if this is going to be the focus of the curriculum?
Yeah.
And in high school, would it be a block? In elementary school, it would just be part of their day? But that's what I was trying to figure out.
And that's what we'll figure out.
Yeah, how do you know?
One more thing, and I just quickly, as you know, I refer to, we're going to different schools. Katie, here by myself, going to different schools to get input on the plan for improvement. Across elementary schools, probably of one or two things that, only one or two things that were consistent across elementary school in terms of needs was an SEL curriculum that's consistent, coherent, and they're doing it together. What part of it was moving on for second step, which the Budget, the Finance Committee heard about, but just a real understanding that their, the skill development, basic school development for all students, that they need to happen. So this is very timely in terms of what's raising that need in the process of checking this out.
Sorry, hesitant. So this is coming up, just saying.
No, no.
So just, just thinking about pulling kids into a tier two thing, I'm just wondering about stigma and how, you know, sort of, I'm sure you're all working on that, but I'm just thinking, at any point when a child comes out of. And the second thing, again, you may hit this, but one of the things that, I'm a parent of elementary school kids, and one of the sort of social-emotional things that really struck me is the growth mindset. You know, that is a really powerful tool. So for the kids who are already sort of coming up with those things, will you be integrating what they already, sort of the messages they're already getting with these new themes?
So in terms of the identification of kids and offering them additional support, that is nothing that would be mandated, like. So that would be a discussion with the guardian, the parent, and the student and to see if it's a time limit, it's a week, if they wanted that intervention. I think what we're seeing at the school level is, and I can't sit in another meeting talking about the broken mental health system, there's no services. So we are having to provide much more, much more. And so I think, but I think it's a, I mean, if someone felt like that was not going to be helpful or stigmatizing, then they, they wouldn't participate. That's totally, it's totally optional, unlike the tier one, which is where everyone gets it.
It's very similar to, like, reading intervention, math intervention. You're identifying groups of students that need more based on data, based on teacher concerns. And then you're building things in for short periods of time to see if you're effective. It's that social-emotional piece that also goes along with that MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support we're trying to build.
Very well.
So and I want to respond to your other piece, which is the growth mindset. So, so when I went to every school, every school has huge pockets of amazing things happening. I mean, no one's doing it everywhere. But so I think we look at those pieces and we keep some of those pieces. Like, even the second step, to be honest, it's very good at precat. This isn't. So maybe we keep that. So I think that's where we're looking at taking, you know, what we need and what our students need and extended adjusting. Okay. So this is, so again, so excited about every slide. I think this is the next one that I'm really excited about. Okay, so this is promoting mental health and wellness through early identification and education. So how we're doing this, the core components of this would be really looking at the support and clinical, deepening the work around using evidence-based practices[1505.06] Deepening the work around using evidence-based practices and more of a shared language. Um, we also, um, are doing more early identification using universal screening tools to ensure equitable access to necessary services. So that's a lot of words, but basically it's like creating systemic ways to identify kids and support them better. And not just supporting the kid that is crying the last. The we need to support these kids that are struggling in silence. So we we're doing that. And increase awareness of both mental health and wellness, reduce, decrease stigma and promote help-seeking behaviors. So next slide, because I'm going to go over everything about that. So, um, this is how we are developing clinical staff. So this is one of the most exciting parts. Um, in the past, we really, we met very infrequently. Maybe once a month, maybe not once a month. Now that the principals, the leadership has been completely supportive of having us have a weekly time every week. All of district clinical staff. Meet. And we meet, we do clinical consults, we have trainings and like. Um, this week I have five before training, next week I have QPR, question for study refer. Then we get to that. I have, um, psycho pharmacology. So there's topics. We, I do, we do get trainings in, we share high-risk cases. So if there's a family in Bets and O'Malley and the high school, we talk about and share information. So that we can support families better. Um, what else we do?
Those are big things, by the way.
Those are healthy things.
They're making, and you know what? And if you, and I come from the mental health world. In a school, you don't have time to reflect on your. It has been really changing how we, how we, how we support kids has been just so improved by this time. Um, and then I also started a North Forest School-based Mental Health Collaborative. Because again, I think we can learn from neighboring districts. And so I invite all my friends in the neighborhood. Greg is like, oh, my God. But anyway, so that has been great. Um, and then Lynn Lyons. Um, Lynn Lyons, as you've heard, um, has been really changed how we. It shifted how we have supported kids struggling with anxiety. So I'm going to go through that in the next slide unless you want to ask me anything.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, Sam, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I more just sort of want to make a comment because. I just first just want to thank you for for recognizing the need for clinical supervision and consultation, right? Because as a social worker, when I think about my work, supervision has historically been probably the most important thing. That I could have received from my colleagues, both individual and group supervision. I don't think I could have survived the work that I do currently now in private practice. I pay for my own supervision. It is so incredibly important. And it's something that I've recognized as a need for school-based mental health counselors. They don't receive supervision. And historically, and so I just, I I just want to pinpoint that is just so incredibly important for just the rest of the committee because. Without that, it is so hard to reflect on your work and to bounce ideas off of each other. And to just receive for support for the really, really tough work that these clinicians are doing. It's, it's so incredibly important. So thank you for recognizing that need.
Thank you.
I have a question and it can be to both of you actually. Um, a few years ago before COVID. Um, there was a group that met. Um, I think it was once a month. It included a representative from the district attorney's office, the police department.
CCI.
CCI.
Yep, we still do.
So you do. So is this, are you at those meetings to get that information from CCI to bring back to your colleagues?
Yes.
And have those important discussions?
Yes.
Okay. Cause yeah, I was worried that it got lost.
No, no, we still are well. Thank you. And then the, I'd like, um, what Sam said, I also meet with people individually in groups of teams. Um, so they're getting a lot more, um, support, clinical support. Um, so Lynn Lyons. Um. So if Ben's best decision was hiring me, mine was hiring her. She has. Not your best. So Lynn Lyons has really shifted how we do her. So she has, um. She has, um, been a great consultant to us. We meet with her once a month. Um, she has, you know, emphasized the need to develop skills. Um, for students not try to eliminate or accommodate anxiety, which makes anxiety stronger. Um, and there's just a lot of ways, um, to do that. She uses a lot of, um. Narrative like externalizing worry, focusing on the process, not the content. So if you focus on. So I'll give you an example. So I had a, I had a psychiatrist call me, Amy. This kid has PTSD, the English class is too loud, she needs a separate space. And this is right when we started working with her. So I'm walking to James Cook's office thinking I'm going to find her a safer space. By the time I got there, I'm like, no, 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 no. Lynn Lyons would not want me to find a safer separate space. She would want us, what skill does this student need to develop? To de-develop the ability to tolerate distress. And then maybe also what skills does that teacher need to make it more of a trauma-informed classroom? And I'm going to tell you that takes a lot more time than finding a separate space. But it's so, so important. So, um, there's, there's many, um. Many scenarios of what she's helped with, but basically we're not looking to eliminate distress. Or create certainty in people's lives because that doesn't exist in the world. We need people to change their relationship with anxiety, tolerate distress and learn ways to cope with that. So, so it's been great. So next slide. Um, so. This kind of goes under social emotional learning, but kind of not. So this has mental health literacy. This is teaching kids the language of mental health. Um, not just mental pathology, but really wellness. Um, too, which you'll see in another slide, but basically. Um, this is very aligned with the mental health ambassadors. I'm actually trying to get them to be the voice around this. To go to O'Malley, teach kids about de-stigmatizing mental health, how to promote mental wellness. And, um, know how to get help. The biggest thing is we want kids to. Get help before it reaches a crisis. So.
And you've met, obviously, those mental health ambassadors who need a degree by any.
Good. So that's the activating the youth voice. I just, oh, I didn't change it. I changed it online. Um, so. So this is, um, so this is a theme really throughout everything is really empowering kids. And, um, this has been one of my favorite parts is just creating, developing these kids' voice and skills in doing this work. Okay, so I think the next. Um, so this is loving the community partners. Um, so it's recognizing that I said before, we are the school for. We cannot possibly support every kid's complex needs. We need the community. Um, we need to, um, get more connected, well, unconnected, but not everyone is, but they need to be more connected. We need to think outside the box in creating, um, wraparound supports for our kids. So you're going to hear about that in our partnerships. Next. Um, so I developed phrase last year, re-engaging all youth to school. It was, um. It was out of the need to create an off-site program for kids who couldn't come to the high school for whatever reason because of COVID. And it was a online, they would do work online at Unity and they could also access their, um, mental health. Psychoeducational groups, food, housing services, you know, they have a lot of services. So, but I know, I noticed that we didn't have, we needed an onsite tutor. We need someone that can help kids more academically there. So, um, the $20,000 grant was received and we hired a student success coach. And she started, the program started today. It can serve up to 15 people. Um, we're really excited about that. So that's that. And that's just another way to, you know, support kids. So this is, um. Super exciting. This I call screening for wellbeing. It's actually what I think we need to be doing district-wide, but I'm piloting it this year. It's, um, universal screening. So some, we should be doing universal screening. Period. But it's a big endeavor. So it's, I got $100,000 from DOE a couple of weeks ago to pilot it. Yeah, so you guys are going to approve that soon?
I have her at every meeting.
All right. So, um, we're going to be doing, um, the 10 and the 11th grade are going to get an anxiety scale called the GAD. It's seven items. Um, and again, I want to try to phrase it like screening for wellbeing, like we're not just screening for pathology. Um, but, um, I think. I just think we need a systematic way to get kids to, um. To, to get to know what kids are struggling. So, um, we already do a depression scale in the SOS signs of suicide in the health class. Um, that's in Heaven and Peace Program. Um, we've also done a couple wellness checks at the high school and then responded to those needs. Um, but the most exciting part of it though about this, okay, so we got the grant, yay, we're going to pilot the universal screen. Now, what do we do with the kids that are elevated that need support? So we're going to pay JRI. Money to run the Trails eight-week. CVT groups around anxiety. For kids who want it. And I also wrote in. Um, because our EOL students are struggling, but they might not endorse an anxiety scale. So we are partnering with Project Adventure. And that, and I have a bilingual adventure-based counselor who's going to work with those kids. So that's out of this, um, grant. So. That's so exciting. I think, right? To go after high school. Um, they're going to come to college to high school. They're going to bring them to the ropes courses in Beverly. There's money for transportation. We also, in this grant, have, um. Uh, money to get a, um, a bilingual case manager. So it's a lot of work, but it, and it ends June 30th. So we got to get, we're starting.
How much is coming to 23, 22?
Yeah, we, we're good. We, we did, we, I, we have a whole timeline and it'll be good. So I'll let you know how the pilot goes. And then data collection analysis, this is, this is my least favorite. Oh, Sam, go ahead, Sam.
This is really hard and frustrating for me to be waving up here, so I apologize. Um, can you just break down a little bit more what universal screening looks like? Are we only screening for anxiety? Are we screening for depression? Are we screening for trauma? What does that look like? Or what does it look like for, um? Like, what do you imagine it being sort of long-term?
What do I imagine it being long-term?
Yeah, like what's your ideal?
So, um, so I'm looking at a lot of different things, um, but this year we're just doing the craft. I didn't mention this, but we, we're doing the craft, which we do usually for one day and we're going to do it for two. And that's the substance use screening. Um, and then as I've always wanted to do in addition to that. An anxiety scale because I think kids are self-medicating and that is a nice way to have an education, you know. If they have a substance abuse problem, they may, you know, so we, we're, we're going to do this craft and the GAD. Which is anxiety. We decided not to do the depression yet. We do it in ninth grade. Um, and we wanted to try the, um, anxiety because we wanted to make sure we had the capacity to respond. And anxiety has been the most prevalent since the COVID, so we thought that would be the kind of symptom to target. In the future, I would love input. Um, there's also like these, um, I'm forgetting the name, but there's these. Ones that little kids can do on iPads about wellness checks. Um, K3, that's a great model. Um, child, I forget what it's called, something up. Mind up or anyway, um. So, yeah, there's, it's up in the air as to where we're going with this because I think I need a lot more input.
Okay, thank you.
And you've mentioned already, one of the critical challenges here is do screenings. And then not have in place how you respond is, is just, it's a great problem. You know, so, um, wanting to hear everybody, but no, at this point, we want to pass it. This is a lot of the JRI, Project Adventure component, like important, at least on short term. But, um, Minnesota's, I mean, I was obviously very concerned aware of is how we build so we can respond once we do a screen.
Amy, can you, um, give us a sense of what the waitlists are like in town for mental health services?
I was told a year, I don't even refer, I refer to my friends and beg them. So I don't, I don't go to the agencies anymore, but they're, they're, they're astronomical.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, oh, JRI though has been great. I mean, they're going to be doing this and I also have Unity doing a drop-in. Um, one day a week as well with kids, so at the high school, so that's good. So the screening for wellbeing and then data. Um, is, I won't go through too much, but basically resource, resource mapping, needs assessments and using behavioral data. And program evaluation to help guide decisions. Um, right now, um, you can go to the next one, we're over, we're done then. Um, the, um. I think, I, I think where I get a little bit frustrated is like we keep hearing, oh, kids are struggling, more kids are struggling, they're struggling, they're struggling, they're struggling. And it's all very anecdotal and qualitative. I, you know, we've been through a hard time. I think a lot of people are struggling. So I did work with SSRE with the help of the Gloucester Health Department. And SSRE is who we've done historically for the YRBS. They're amazing.
Can you show what Brett, what are?
Oh, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Um, and they're just amazing people. Um, and they created a dashboard, a behavioral health dashboard. That will track non-identifying information throughout the district on different incidences, homelessness, 51As. Um, anytime there's an educational disruption due to mental health. Reason, um, screenings. That kind of thing. Um, a suspected child abuse scenario.
Amy, to that point, um, would you be able to provide, or like this SSRE sounds like a good. Great organization, but would you be able to provide us a snapshot of what some of their evaluation or some of their research or? Can we find that? Is it readily available?
So you mean that like we, YRBS.
Survey.
I can get you that.
Yeah, surveys that was in every two years.
Done that in two years. It's going to be hopefully done this year. We're still trying to get a vendor because they're not doing it anymore.
Yeah.
But I also can have, um, the superintendent share with you the dashboard. It's almost that.
Yeah, because I, I totally agree with you, you know. So the kid, you know, children nowadays is a lot more stress, a lot more anxiety. Is their data, is their reports like that or are there organizations that can show that type of data? Would be helpful.
Yeah, the YRBS will show you that.
Yeah. And the, the, the really important piece on that is, um, move past anecdotal to understanding what's really happening and then being able to act on it. Because it's hard to, it's really hard to act with anecdotal or this, this pervasive sense of kids are struggling, kids are struggling. It's hard to act on that.
Right.
So some of the, um, report data gathering that Amy wants to do and putting in place will, you know, help us sort of. Prioritize act, understand, really, really size what's going on in what areas, so.
And then last, um, so April 6th, um, the mental health ambassadors have begged me to get him. Um, it's Kevin Hines. He survived, um, jump, he survived the jump off the Golden Gate Bridge and he, his is a message of hope. And of that there is help and to get help, you don't have to go to those extremes and he's a evidence-based. They say he's the only evidence-based suicide prevention speaker. Um, so I'm hoping, I'm going to have him two times, two times in the DHS and then. Either at the school, maybe city hall, I'm not sure. We'll see. So we'll have another event at night. Yeah.
Go ahead. Will you let us help promote that? Because I would, we really need a community-wide promotion of that and I'd love to have the school help you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get, uh, keep it activated. We'll get KTOs activated. Yeah, yeah. Is this going to be streamed?
So the last one we had, um, who was that speaker that came to talk about anxiety? There wasn't enough room for all the parents. So I mean, as you're saying, promote it. I'm thinking, yeah, you're going to promote it, but you're going to need a bigger room.
Well, I would imagine it'll be on.
So streaming is a question that I asked before, but I think the woman that was here before was Amy. And they wouldn't allow it to be streamed, so.
That's a great problem.
But I was hoping, following what he said, um, that would be huge.
Yeah.
If not, you might need to do more than one session.
Yeah.
From our last reaction from the community.
They might want to be compensated here, like somebody. Pain and, you know, present in front of a certain number of people. Then you add streaming, that'd be another negotiation.
I don't know how this relates, but there were those GEF-sponsored, um, social emotional, uh, you know, rounding up for parents. Last year.
Last year.
That we were able to grow. I mean, I, you know, I know you're, this is the beginning, but like that we're able to be on Zoom and there were different times. And I think that's a very useful model for the parents.
Yeah. Thank you.
This is in conjunction with the Boston Health Department, right?
Yes, um, yes.
So, but I think, I mean, streaming would be great, be ideal. Um, but, uh, but we're looking, because everything people raise could be, you know, a challenge or an issue or something to solve.
Yeah.
One of the chief assemblies that, oh, great.
Yes.
Go ahead, Melissa. Um, first a comment, I think, um, when you mentioned the mental health ambassadors, kids helping kids is huge. I, I have a personal granddaughter and there's one thing I've learned. If a 56-year-old person tells her something, it's not happening. But if a 15 or 18-year-old tells her something, she's all ears.
Right.
I think that is an excellent way to get, um, messaging out. And for our kids to be able to relate to another student or kid about some issues that they, um, likely have experienced themselves. And so I think that's huge. Um. When you were talking about, um, the whole social emotional, this is, this is becoming normal. There are some parents in the community, I can say this because I've had recent discussions. Who think that schools should provide the reading, the writing and the arithmetic. And all these other expenses that are impacting the budget is a concern to them and that should be on the parents' responsibility. But I love how you started this conversation saying this committee as a whole puts that first. So it is becoming normal, which is great progress in a couple of years. Um, but my, my question. No, go ahead, I.
Well, we, we know more and more that if kids aren't ready or, or, or that's no two things or eyesight or anxiety or. Um, you know, uh, anyway, so, so, you know, learning isn't available to them. If they are stressed out, anxious, or they don't have the skills, as Amy's examples earlier. To, you know, to manage themselves within the classroom, you know? So, um, I do, I, you know, the responsibility of schools has grown over the years. Don't know about that, right? Um, but also our understanding of how kids learn best has grown exponentially. I think this is a piece of that. It's a legitimate question, but I think we have really clear answers that kids, um, all kids, you know, who struggle. I mean, it's not just struggling, right? It's, 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 uh, helping kids get ready to learn opens up another portal.
In my position where I work, I mean, I see the ugliness and then I read reports and then I'm like, how does that keep going to school the next day? So it's, it's completely understandable in my work. So my, my question, where I was trying to get it after I did those comments was, um. So we had, the anxiety is huge, um, at most grade levels. But how are we going to determine what is COVID anxiety versus regular anxiety? Meaning, I mean, there's such a huge impact just COVID had on student learning with anxiety. Especially if you think of first graders or pre-kindergarten, their first two years in school have been with masks. And, and being afraid of being close to somebody. And hopefully eventually that's going to go away, but that in itself is going to create anxiety for that group, particular group that doesn't know. Like without the anxiety of, am I too close to you? Don't breathe on me as you mask up, right? You know, all those issues that they are experiencing. So how is, is these programs going to identify or assist? Anxiety that is brought on by what's going on now versus. Everyday unfortunate issues that remain anxiety. So.
So I guess, well, I guess, I think, I think my reaction, I don't know if it's an answer, but is that. We're never, we're never clear on what is the root cause. And I think what we're learning with the consultation is that the content and reason why it doesn't really matter. It's more, everyone's going to have distress in their life. And I just don't like to keep pathologizing it, like. Even clinical anxiety, is it really that? It doesn't have to be that. It could just be distress or worry. And then helping kids manage that, right? So I think, um, we're going to have a lot of impact fallout, emotional, we have already, right? Due to the pandemic, but I don't think it's ever going to become clear what is what, like what to difference.
It doesn't matter because you.
I don't think so. We're not, okay. Yeah, because we're creating, right?
Skill.
Skill building and the process, not the content.
Yeah, I think something as simple as somebody has a grandparent that's not well, right? I mean, that's gotta be way, that's, you know, it's funny.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mark. I feel that too.
Let Sam go first. This is her.
Go ahead, Sam.
No, you do that.
All right, no worries. Amy, I'm just curious, what do you think our role is as a district in supporting family systems? And I say that because in sort of thinking about what Melissa just said, you know, I think more the, the impact on kids in relation to COVID is, in my opinion, more in relation to family stress, right? Like, family stress has increased, you know, tenfold over the last two years. Parental stress has increased tenfold over the last two years. And generally, parents are not okay. Parents are really struggling. So I'm curious, what do you, what do you think our role is? You know, with, with waitlist being as long as they are, first probably in-home family therapy or family therapy in general, how can we support families?
I think, I think our role is growing, and I think we are trying to support them in every way. I mean, I know, I know just from doing supervision, our engaging parents, meeting with parents, going to home visits, like, I mean, we're doing it constantly. And I talked, you know, with Greg, I'm working on the attendance. Family engagement is a huge piece, and just not just family engagement at the crisis level, not just at the, oh my God, they haven't come for two weeks. No, it should start like kindergarten, and it, and proactive relationship building, not, and so I think that's what I believe the role is, is forming those really strong partnerships with parents early on.
Yeah, and that's really interesting. Kathy and Greg and I were just talking about this today, right? Like, for two years, families have sort of had to sort of be at a distance to our school buildings, right? Like, we haven't been able to go in as much and participate. And so I think we have some building to do again on inviting families in and, and getting some face time, meaningful face time with parents and guardians.
No, I wholeheartedly agree.
Yeah.
Okay, Mark. So firstly, I just wanted to say, like, I watched you work, you know, from here, and it's just, it's so huge and so important what you're building here. So just like a really heartfelt thank you. And also, you know, the point you made and the superintendent made about, like, these are skills you owe me. And we're in this really rapidly changing society, right? And kids, you know, I see it, you know, kids are on screens, and there's, everything has changed in a decade or two decades. And with that comes mental health issues or changes. I don't wanna pathologize it either. So I think a focus on how do we build relationships? How do we learn to turn away negative thoughts? I just think that that is such, that's just, that's just tools for life for every student and every adult. And I think, you know, I think spreading the message that way may help because there's no one who cannot benefit from what you're talking about. And so I just want to thank you for the way in which you're approaching it and for all you're doing.
Well, education class.
Okay.
Oh, that'll be the next thing.
These little class will talk and jokes.
Do you have a question?
A statement and a question, just to recover whatever else. I really appreciate what you're doing, Amy. And a couple, I wrote down a bunch of things, but one of the things that I think is the, for me, is the most important thing, is the, and you said it, the capacity to respond. Kids open up this Pandora's box, and, you know, we can sit around and hypothesize about anxiety all day long, but all of a sudden, you go to a fifth grader who's in a tight spot, a really tight spot, because we've opened the box of, oh, let's talk about anxiety. And that can be, I think it can be a dangerous and slippery slope if the services that kids need aren't in place. And it's only gonna take, you know, a couple of bad examples of, well, we should have had, we should have had some sort of safety now. We should have had something for that kid. And so to me, that's the real important takeaway. The other important takeaway that Laura just mentioned is relationships. At the end of the day, it's all about building relationships, whether that's, whether it's with a teacher that you feel comfortable with, or a counselor, or through the ambassador program, maybe it's another student, or, and to really kind of hone in on that. Like most 60-year-old people, I come from the school, well, just pull yourself up on the bootstraps, you'll be fine. Don't worry. Get through it, grind it out. And the world is definitely different than that. Sometimes I think, sometimes I get a little bit concerned that we're creating something that we have to be careful about, but I'm totally on board with what you're doing. And I, I don't think I could support it anymore, would be any more impressed with you.
Thank you.
That's me, bluntly.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here with us. Good. And I, I think it'll be worthwhile to actually maybe have the school committee propose just this particular piece of our meeting tonight on Facebook, because I do know, you know, parents are busy, they don't necessarily look at our agendas unless somebody's talking about it. I just think there may be a lot of parents that might wanna know the framework with which we are approaching this going forward.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say the next part is, is also quite interesting, too.
Be as entertaining as I say.
You are welcome to leave. You can go to other things.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thanks so much. Thanks. So, help folks. So we're gonna give you an update on a few things, like I often do. If you wanted to highlight again and thank Amy for your ship in her presentation tonight, and just helping the committee and the community really get an handle on the great work that our clinical staff, our guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, school psychologists are doing together to really improve or support, service of our students. Very proud stuff. I'm gonna pull the presentation. Before I, oh yeah, let me just pull that quickly.
Right.
So I haven't shared with you yet, because there is, just some things are happening pretty quickly, and putting some things in place, which we're gonna share and update you about tonight. So, a couple things. So, again, just as we always say, our primary objective this year is safe educating all our students in our schools every day to maximize learning, address our students' full needs, and support community's daily needs. A couple things. First of all, just to, just to begin, I had the distinct pleasure and privilege of being at East Gloucester School yesterday, where their professional learning communities, professional learning communities are groups of teachers meeting together on topics of their interest. It helps them learn more about their work, work to learn from each other, and develop their practice. And I've had a great time listening to the professional learning communities at East Gloucester, and sharing so far what they've been working on over the first half of the year. They have, some of them are curriculum-based, many of them. One group has been working on the ELA pilot, with Wisdom, and one for CKLA. They both reported that. Another group reported on the work they're doing with GIOs, Science, currently. Another one reported out on work around, doing health, some health work with fifth graders. And one more, was working on supporting EL learners in, in using visuals and, and translations to help with word problems. Some pretty meaty topics. Folks learn a lot, but what I appreciated a few things so much about learning from them was how purposely they weren't learning, how they were talking about and very honestly open, open and sharing what they were learning. And then also, how they talked about how they're gonna take what they've been learning and apply it to their classrooms, this sort of thing. One teacher was, this is Emily Hurry, was just tremendous in sharing how she's doing the Wind and Wisdom pilot, how the beginning was a bit overwhelming, like new, like new things often are, but, and she wasn't too sure about it. But now she's grown more comfortable with support from her colleagues who she was working with, and also Melissa Francis, literacy coach, has just really, you know, come to see just some of those advantages and some of the work. Folks were working on, you know, moving on from different things, like reading streets. But I appreciate the honesty, that real work together to get better. As you've heard me say again and again, that's really needs to be our mantra, how we work together to get better every day. And then the best part of that meeting was just hearing the laughter. The group together, drawing themselves, enjoying each other, laughing about things they were doing in their groups, laughing together. And one thing they learned was that fifth graders can do, need to do more teeth brushing. That's one of the health things they learn. But that's probably not too much a surprise for parents. But it was great to be among professionals digging in together and learning about their craft and then sharing it. So, good COVID update, update tonight. Some good news, this is our wastewater. I don't show this too often, because as you can see, for most of the year, it's not really news. But as December went into, into January, or it went November and December, the wastewater went up significantly, as everyone saw. But then good news really shifted on the results on January 7th. That's the first decline here. This hike was December 31st. The next, a week later, January, was January 7th, and 14th and 21st. So you can see, we're experiencing in the community decreased number of cases, and that's mirroring what we're seeing in the wastewater. As I said to our staff a week or so ago, I gave what is now Greg Box's most favorite line in a super in an update, was good news from Gloucester's fecal matter. And he keeps on wanting me to use it again and again, so I just use it again. So, there you go. So our numbers in terms of active cases have gone down in terms of the current active case in police goes 73 to 109. Still had significant uptick in cases over the last two weeks, but as you can see, it went to all schools, have declined. I think O'Malley's the only one that's up a little bit, but some significant declines, say Plum Cove and, at preschool for its size, at West Parish, at Veterans. So, you know, good, again, that is mirroring or sort of following the wastewater results. So that's good news. There you can see our cases have gone, you know, up and down in the beginning of the year, and then up, 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 and now with a dip this last week. We, by all accounts, assume that will continue, but of course, we'll, I mean, all evidence is pointing that it will continue to decline. There isn't, so that's what we expect. The vaccination percentage, and this is the first time we're reporting the elementary schools. So you can see, across all of our elementary schools, just about at 50%. Obviously preschool, most kids are not eligible at the preschool to get vaccinated. That's why that's so low. But when Nurse Jeff Parko pulled this tonight, or this morning, rather, he ended up surprised that the, you know, that the, by and large, the elementary schools are at 50% or so, which is a good, I think, a good, you know, good beginning, good start. As you can see, O'Malley continues to go, you see the last, two weeks ago, the numbers. So all of those have increased. You know, O'Malley and DHS, and then, I mean, DHS has also increased as well. It looks like the 11th grade is catching up with the 12th grade. So that's, that's also a good sign. But those continue to go up slowly bit by bit, have had a little more rapid increase over the last few weeks or month or so. Another piece is to follow from last time. This is the student attendance data from last time, a week, two weeks ago, for the first, you know, week or so of school. What you'll see here is that no schools at this point were above 90% attendance. None of them were, okay? At this point, probably those, these three days are really impressive the whole time. This is the last week, and you'll see that five of the seven schools are above 90%. Okay, so a big improvement. The scale is a little bit different on the two slides, but I just wanted to show you that, you know, five to seven schools, we only have the preschool, which is up and down significantly. This was a day they didn't have school. That's why they have zero attendance, or it goes below the chart. But they have, you know, they're smaller, so they fluctuate a little more significantly. The high school was up a little last week, down, and now trending back up again. But that's just between last week and, or two weeks ago this week, that is essentially, we're getting back to normal attendance for this year. As I mentioned last time, we were moving definitely normal attendance for staff, the elementary schools, and, and also O'Malley at that point. And then I'm showing you O'Malley and DHS right now, because those are the only ones that we had any, any significant concern about. On top, in the yellow, is O'Malley's absences for that first week or so, back from a break. And now, in the yellow down below, you see the more recent ones. So lower, earliest week, the uptick in the last couple of days, and then down lower again. The white band here is the teacher absences. I didn't show you that last time, but you can see the teacher absences are, are, you know, a, a part of the total of absences in yellow. The same thing with DHS on the top, you know, these were, you know, really, you know, a very difficult week or so for DHS. You can see that the numbers have come down significantly, and then also, except for the last couple of days, up again. Again, you know, this time of year, this isn't out of the norm this time of year, but what you do see as well, is, you know, part of those are absences, are teachers, not all of them typically. So one thing that also does affect, it isn't reflected here, our professional development. So folks will often be out of professional development, that maybe we're leading, and we're doing, but maybe out of the classroom that day. But I include that as here, but that does sometimes impact the staffing with school from time to time. So the next piece tonight is, is just some progress or next steps, what we're gonna start making, and I'm gonna present to you tonight about sort of our next steps of living with COVID. A second here. Sorry.
Can you send that to us so that we have it? I don't think we got it.
No, you didn't, because it was being worked on actually. I'll send it afterwards. So, just in terms of, you know, we're now approaching two years of COVID, March 20th, a day I may never forget. And we've been dealing with the turmoil and destruction, you know, the safety protocols, and sadly, the loss of too many families. Families, too many families have suffered loss here in Gloucester, in Massachusetts, but also across the world, the globe. Through all of that, one thing's been constant, and that's that we adjust, and we just keep on adjusting. And as we learn more about the virus and the science behind it, we have, we've had to adjust every separate way. Been adjusting as we develop safety protocols, we let go of earlier ones. I think, every day, I think, I'm not washing groceries anymore. That was trying. We adjusted remote learning, we adjusted, again, returning in school, of course. We've adjusted as new tools to combat the virus that had developed. So vaccinations, now more and more different types of tests, and now also, you know, pills and variety of methods. We've adjusted distances, we've adjusted time and time again. We've got every phase of the pandemic with more information, new tools, revised protocols, about what, what it takes to keep our students and our families and our staff safe. And so tonight, we're, we're beginning to enter another, another new phase, I believe, one that I think is gonna continue us on our path towards greater normalcy in our schools, maybe in our lives. And that means more about living with COVID among us, instead of COVID telling us how to live. You know, tonight Samantha mentioned that we need to do more building with families, you know, families that haven't been able to sort of spend too much time in our schools, you know, experiencing that community, seeing the success of their children, and really experiencing joy of being in school. And tonight, we're talking, have to talk about making test, testing much more widely available to our staff and our family and our, and our students. And, and part of that, it will help us keep moving towards that time where things are, at least how we remember them in some ways and better in other ways. So we're talking about making testing widely available. We're also gonna talk about letting go, letting go some of the current work that we've been doing as well, and current practices. So let me jump in and show to you what we're talking about, and just get into some details here. We've got Kylie Davis here on, on the line, and also Nurse, Nurse Jeff Parko. They're the ones who are really helping lead this effort, particularly Kylie, who take a very significant role in that. So they So they will help me along as we go. We just get the sharing going here. Okay, so our next step in learning to live with COVID here in our schools is about, so I mentioned changes in constant, all these different things we've been going through, continuing forward. And what we're trying to do here is, you know, moving from COVID is our life to living with COVID. And what that means, we continue to move toward no longer pertaining opportunities and activities, being able to identify any positive cases as early as possible. We need to always pay, pay close attention to symptoms of illness. And that's COVID or otherwise going forward. What we certainly have learned is if a child is sick for any reason, the best way to keep our, our schools healthy is for our child to stay home until they're better. And we'll always have to pay attention to that. We want to continue moving towards returning our focus to learning and support and moving our schools forward. We want to continue to move toward less energy, time, intention, dealing with, dealing with the reactive COVID. And that includes allowing our nurses to support the range of student health needs by not being overwhelmed by COVID, which is something that really has happened over the past couple of years. So there are some things that won't change. One of the most important things that vaccinations will remain our highest priority. This is the single most important weapon against COVID. And the more people in our community, in our schools who are vaccinated, the safer our families or schools and our communities are. So we're going to continue to encourage students and families to get vaccinated. Of course, all our SAFR will continue to let families and staff know vaccination clinics and booster clinics. We'll do that on a regular basis as we have been, probably ramped it up some. Another thing that won't change is masks remain a state wide requirement for all students and staff in public schools. I support this, this committee voted very previously support masks in the, in the, in the fall or in the summer, in the, in the, end of the summer. But I do want to be clear in my folks that this is a statewide requirement. We don't have an option on this. Masks continue with buses and we'll continue to retain this distancing as much as possible. Continue to limit the numbers of students at tables at lunch and space in the park. So there's some things that we'll continue on and we see no change in those at all. What we do see, and this is significant, is that we are launching with the state, with the support of the state, at home rapid testing program. It's not something we've ever offered before, but starting this week, families can opt in to get a free rapid test for, for any of their students every single week. Staff can also opt in to get a free rapid test every week. These tests are done at home and the positives are reported through a form and also and reported to our, or, which is reported to our nurses at our schools, as long as families report them will know of any positive cases. So I'm going to go through a few of these things to help you understand them and then happily answer questions. With the at home rapid testing program, we now have what I think is a very, very big deal. Every staff, every student in our schools has the ability and the option to have two tests per week, right? This is something that would have been, it, it was unheard of a year ago, even six months ago. I would say even a, a month ago because they weren't available. But with our weekly pool testing and the at home rapid tests, every single person who wants to can know within, twice a week, whether they are, are safe and, and COVID free and therefore aren't able, won't, won't be infecting anybody else. Okay. Plus in addition to that, we will keep going with symptomatic testing. Any staff or students who are in the building, experienced symptoms after the first period of the day can get a free rapid test or rapid test at that point. We are still encouraging families that if you have symptoms, stay home. And one of the, one of the things we have, have had to do is if students show up with symptoms, we send them home. Okay. And that's just, that's logistical operational because the symptomatic testing is specifically for folks who experience a kind of symptoms, you know, during a school day. So in terms of having a focus on the at home rapid testing, the process is this. So you think of a two week cycle here. The first Wednesday will be the opt in deadline to start the following week. I'll go some specific timelines in a moment. So a family signs up by Wednesday, the first Wednesday, that allows them to get tested the following week. Okay, student tests on the following week, student tests are delivered. We order them every week from the state or every two weeks, I'd say. Student tests are delivered to our main, our main office every other Tuesday. Those test boxes all have two tests in them. Those distribute to schools on Wednesday through the next day with lists that we're organizing for the schools. The next day, Thursday of that week, schools distribute the tests to students in homeroom or at GHS will be in the A block. That happens every day. Then students take the tests home. We'll notify families who are participating, you know, every, every Thursday, when the tests are coming home to look in the backpacks and ask their students for them. Okay. And then every, each student gets a box with two tests. So they're delivered tests every two weeks or distributed tests every two weeks. But everyone will test on a Friday. We do our, our pool testing, our weekly COVID testing on Mondays and Tuesdays. So we spread things out and we could on Thursday or Friday, what we decided is that if everyone's doing the same day, it's easy, simple, consistent every week. So we will be messaging and communicating that Friday is test day basically. Reporting positive results, this is something that we've had to work out, have, have had good support from the State Department of Health on this. If a student is positive, fans complete an online form that goes automatically to the schools. And then we will have follow up, not from nurses, but from our staff members, any positive students. So families will know what next steps and what their timeline is.
And may I ask a clarification question?
Yes, yep.
On the previous slide. So do families have to opt in every single week that they want to do it? Or if they opt in, are they just?
Opt in once, yeah, yeah. But, but they can opt in anytime. And so that Wednesday deadline is just for the next distribution.
Okay, all right. So they, once you've opted in, you're, you're in the program.
Yep, 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 okay. And then any positive students return from the, on the sixth day after testing. So the sixth day, sixth calendar day, that would be Thursday. If you test positive on a Friday, return on Thursday, Thursday, okay? But that'll be standardized as well. So, but, and so that's what we're doing new. We're also letting go of a couple of things. And because we'll have such significant amounts of testing here and because our in school transmission continues to be so low, we feel like we, we can and the state is allowing us to, in, in terms of participating in the at home testing program, we're required to let go of, and honestly, have to let go, the contact tracing of in school close contacts. We also stop the test and stay because that is testing specifically in school close contacts, right? It has a couple of advantages. It reduces the heavy burden on our nurses or principals and our school secretaries on all the work they've been doing on contact tracing, communicating, tracking, okay? Nurses specifically can use that to, to, as I said earlier, support for wide range of health needs in our schools. And of course, principals and secretaries never, always have too much to do. So that'll help them as well. But ultimately, it's about continuing to move toward normal operations, which is really important in our schools. It does take some of the burden off our school and puts some more responsibility at home. I think that's appropriate for families and we're supporting them with reminders, communication, of course, to test themselves. So we believe we can make this shift. Like I said, primarily, schools continue to show and that's data that's been collected on the pool testing and the test and stay throughout the state over the past six months. Also here, schools are not high risk sources of COVID transmission. In terms of our students, while more students certainly contracting COVID than before, they're not as high risk, especially if they're vaccinated. And just here in terms of our testing, our in school transmission remains very low. All our pool testing across this whole year shows up to the 1.1% positivity rate. So of all the tests, we've given only 1.1 of those tests that had become positive. We're testing more students, so we may have a positive every week or a few every week. But because we're testing many more students each week, it's still a very low rate. And then test and stay, so those folks, I think this is actually even more important. Of our test and stay, these are test and stay kids are ones who've been close contacts in school, right? So if you're going to have in school admissions, it's going to be among this group. And that's been less than 2% across the whole year. So that gives us confidence that, you know, now is a good time. Particularly because we're adding the option for at home rapid testing. If we're just cutting that out, I think that'd be a really good question to ask. But because we're adding a layer of testing and folks will have that option, then I think we're in good shape. Let me just give you some next steps here. So tonight and tomorrow, we'll launch the outreach for staff and for families. We'll also connect with PTOs to help, have them help us reach out. Do social media. The initial deadline for staff to sign up is next Tuesday. That's just the, the first round, you know? People continue to sign up. Staff tests will be distributed next Wednesday to schools or next Thursday to schools. That's right, so next. Remember second is Tuesday, no, it's Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday. And then at that same time, Wednesday, the second is the, is the first deadline for students or families to sign up. So that's next Wednesday, that will allow them to have tests for the following week. First test or distributed staff on Thursday, the third, where we order the student tests on that day. And February 4th, the week from this Friday, when staff do their first round of tests. And then the following week, we have, we receive our student test on February 8th. We distribute those, those tests to schools on the 9th. They're given out to students on the 10th. And then Friday, February 11th, this Friday, we test a, students take, students take their first round of tests. Staff takes their second round of tests. And then basically wash, rinse and repeat from then on. So it's a, it's a testing every week, but distribution every other. And I think that's what I have in terms of an update on that. Can I answer any questions? And Kylie and Jeff are here, ask questions so they can, let's try them at any moment.
Great, so first Kylie and Jeff, thank you, like huge, huge thank yous. For me, the, one of the very positive things about this is to take the burden off the nurses and Jeff and Kylie and what they've been doing. So, but I think, so my understanding from my last meeting was that the percentage of loss for students participating in pool testing was in the 40s.
40s and 50s, yeah, all that, you have to bring this, definitely this, yep.
So, so that's the students who have opted in, some could be from King families, some not, but that's the percentage. Is that Kylie, did you say something? Oh. So, so half, let's say of our students are being tested weekly. I'm sort of curious what our expectation is if only half of our students are testing now. Why do we think having, going home with tests is going to have more people tested? Or just the same people tested more frequently?
I, I don't, I don't think we know honestly. I mean, I, I don't know how to predict this. For some folks, again, I don't know if this is, it's hard to know what this means, but we definitely have heard from some number of folks. I mean, we've got phone calls that they don't want us testing.
Yeah, good.
You know, they, if, it may be okay for them to test in their own homes. I don't know, but I've heard that, you've heard that a number of folks don't want us testing your students, okay? They can really, really, really have some difficulty with it. So maybe that, that allows them to test at home, you know? I'm not sure, but that's one possibility. If, you know, what we haven't done, and this is because we had some staffing, some operational problems, we have actually not pushed pool testing that much with COVID testing. We've been, we've been reminders, but it's not been a push, you know? And so we can certainly, a couple of things. I mean, very honestly, you know, with, with leaving some folks as unduties, we have a little more capacity to do a bigger push. And we have to, I mean, to get folks to sign up for this won't be, I mean, I don't, I really have no idea, you know, what the signup rate will be. It'll probably take a number of weeks before we get more and more people to build. So it's hard to know that. But if, if, say we just did, I think this is the bare minimum to expect, the same folks, the same number of folks who are doing the pool testing, that still is a tremendous advantage, you know? I mean, I just can't overstate like the, the opportunity for families to have your children who may be living with, with older folks, you know? Who you can certainly get COVID from, you know, before, we didn't think that was much of a possibility. It's certainly a few days. It's a huge advantage. It's going to be us, you know, as if they broadly to, to push. It'll take, I think it's important for parents to share that with their friends, you know? So the more we can do to get this out there and get people comfortable with it, the better off we'll all.
So just to keep with this, so it sounds like we're keeping our mitigations in place, right? And we're sort of just removing the, the piece that is around transmission. And like basically we're saying, we're going to keep our mitigations. They've been working, great. And we're going to sort of take, you know, stop the sort of consistent testing of kids to keep them in school, which has worked so far. There's just two things. I mean, I don't know how many immunosuppressed or, you know, at risk students and staff we have, but of course, this doesn't appear to put them at more risk, right? We're keeping our mitigations. I'm just sort of thinking this through.
Yeah, yeah. I think one way I look at it is that we're taking away the work that actually wasn't having much of a positive impact. You know, if, if transmission schools was higher, it's really essential to do that. You know, that one to one work, identifying every single person, right? The fact of the matter, that's been a lot of work that, you know, hasn't resulted in much prevention, you know? It's, I think, I think doing it helps people are comfortable. That's the important thing, especially in a pandemic, right? But I don't, from what I understand, talking to folks, both, you know, Desi's folks and, and what they're telling us and also checking in with, you know, Department of Health, that sort of thing and local health officials. That's just that, we're not raising the risk and we're also giving people tools as long as they use them, you know? We need to push them to, and help them to use them that will do the thing we need to know, which is, you know, if you have COVID, you gotta stay out of school. And when there's been a lot of doubt and uncertainty with folks, now they can be pretty sure about it. The other thing I have to keep on doing is just pushing the, really supporting that if you have symptoms of any, of any illness, you stay home because that's how you keep others safe, you know? So those two pieces, I think, really will require a lot more communication and a lot of hard work.
Same question, I don't know, I'm going to address it to all three of you, really Jeff, Parko, Kylie and yourself.
Sure.
So two questions. Is there any concern by the health officials or the superintendent that parents at home will not be performing the test correctly? And if so, are you going to do a video to put on the website to allow them to do a test?
So, so we have videos to show, okay? None of us start, none of us start on those videos, but if you want to create a new video where you started it, we're open that, okay? But I mean, I know Jeff or Kylie, you know, we're in the business of education, right? And so we really have a lot of faith that people can learn things and learn new things, right? But what the Department of Ed has, has given us is, you know, video links and our opt in forum and also the positive case reporting form are translated in seven different languages. They, they provided that with us and we just modified it. So Jeff or Kylie?
Yeah.
If folks are doing it right, is that the first thing?
Don't have any huge concerns. The nurses are always available. This isn't a specific effort to relieve the burden of the nurses. It's just a lovely benefit of the adjustments to the program. So if anyone has questions, the nurses are available via email, phone. I'm happy to help. You can direct your calls towards me. The, Desi has provided visual aids, videos and other resources that are truly available, not just in our English, Spanish, Portuguese, Italian, the ones that we're more familiar with, but every language that you would need. Often this isn't rolled out with every language. So I think that's a huge benefit. The tests are different than the ones that are used onsite, the Abbott by, by next now, but they're equally as easy. The instructions are very easy to follow and we can, all resources will be available. I've used the kits. I was able to read through the directions and utilize the new kit within a minute of, of seeing a brand new device. So I think that is promising that all families, no matter their ability or ambition, that they will be able to successfully produce the results that are expected from the test.
Thank you, Jeff.
Kylie, want to say something? I thought.
Kylie, anything to add Kylie?
No, just ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, when I was seeing Sam and I was thinking, I was kind of like, okay.
I would like. I would like to add on to an earlier comment about the, I think it was a 1.9 positivity rate during our test-in-state program onsite. As boots on the ground, as a testing provider, I've provided hundreds of these tests. And I will say that the majority of those positive results were symptomatic students that were sent to school. So that has an impact as well. And I think when we have testing availability, the tools, the resources we have now, we are not where we were last year or six months ago. We have the stage four testing for PCR whenever you need it. We now have rapid tests that will be provided to every family for each student. Not just one box per family, but for each student. We also continue to do symptomatic testing for onsets while at school and providing the pool testings. I think we have a amazing box of tools that we didn't have recently. And from my experience, I have a mother-in-law that's a school nurse up in northern Vermont. They are so far behind where we are sitting, even at the beginning of this year. It's amazing to see the efforts that our state has provided for us and the amazing teamwork that all of, all of our staff have collaborated. This hasn't been an easy road and this wasn't an easy decision. But I do truly believe that this is the best direction that we can go with currently. The nurses will not be checking out entirely with contact tracing. We live this. This is our bread and butter. If there are patterns, trends, anything concerning, we will be looking into them and we will be addressing them quickly and effectively.
Thank you. And my second question quickly is, so now you have all these parents testing at home, probably in the morning before the kids go into school or the night before. How, what, what is the expectation of the communication if that test is positive? Like, is everybody going to be calling the school for a certain amount of time?
Well, actually, actually.
What is that process?
I'll hand it off to Kylie because she's created this and Kylie, go ahead.
So if your student tests positive or you're a staff member and you test positive on a Friday morning, you are instructed to contact your school because you will be absent, which you would do anyway. And then there is an online form that is in all of those languages that folks will fill out that asks very basic questions. When was the positive? Name, phone number. And then it gets rolled into a form that our contact tracer will pick up and then contact the family in a relatively close timeframe to give them the information about their quarantine, their return to school. In the case where they call the school and are unable to get online, which is definitely going to happen, the school secretary is able to help them navigate through the form. It won't take more than a minute and 30 seconds to get through. And it's being created where there's a really easy website to go to. It's not a big, long link. It's something you can remember. You can do it from a phone. And so it's a very quick and painless process to report it.
All reports of positive tests have to go through online and not an ability to just call and tell someone?
We are, we really want to push them towards the form because what happens when, we just actually discussed this today. Some, some are nurses because are they diligent, caring, hardworking people, wanting to get the phone calls, okay? But phone calls have to be returned and missed and that sort of thing. This way, it'll be, it'll be easy, easier for you to follow up on, easier to track, easier to communicate with. Phone calls will still happen. That's fine, okay? But Kylie, you can tell about the stickers. Tell about the stickers, please. Come on.
Oh, yeah, of course. If you know me, you know I love myself a good 5160 label. Boxes are all going, the boxes are all going to have labels on them that give the parents the clear instructions on what to do if you test, if your child tests positive. One, report their absence. That's super important, not just for reporting of the COVID positive, but for the safety of the student knowing that they're not going to be in school and we shouldn't be expecting them. Number two, report it at this website that we have.
Testing, testing, testing dot Gloucesterschools dot com.
Yep, yep. That's going to take them right there. And then lastly, you will be contacted shortly by our COVID tracer with steps to move forward. And Melissa, like you said, there are definitely going to be cases that parents call. You know, people.
Right, right, I can hang up on them, I promise.
I'm just thinking of the mother that has like three kids in the morning, one's at O'Meara, one's at Beeman, and one's at the high school. Someone tests positive because she did the test that morning. What do I do now? Oh, wait, I gotta find my phone or computer and do an email when you can just pick up the phone and say, my student's going to be absent today because they tested positive this morning for COVID. And report your absence and your COVID all in one. And to say, so I'm someone that works in an office where people have to call me for online instructions. And let me tell you, I can't even imagine what that's going to do to the secretaries as one after another calls. I mean, I'm sure eventually they'll learn it. But it's, it's not as easy and accepted as you may think it is to expect the secretary to take on that additional instruction on top of their duties already.
Which is why, exactly the reason why to push them towards doing, reporting online.
But if they want instruction on how to do it, you said that the school secretaries were going to do that. So I'm just throwing that out there from experience, how that might work and might not work. It sounds great. Sounds easy.
Both hands. We have to have both hands, all right? Because many, many people just go online. And if we only had phone calls, they'd all go to phone calls.
No, and I appreciate it. I'm just concerned that there is going to be, there are going to be parents that aren't necessarily going to take the time to go online. So how do we capture that info?
100%, yep.
But thank you. Keith, Keith has a question.
Yeah, just logged on to the Gloucester website you just mentioned. So you're collecting data. Who's in charge of the data?
So that data goes to two places. It goes to our, Purgeon was a contact tracer. Now she will be a contact tracer. We're calling her. Her name is Kaylee, Clark Kaylee. So she has access to it in the owners.
Kelly.
Great.
Sorry, but.
Kelly, sorry, Kelly, Kelly, Kylie. So just those folks, yep. Nurses, nurses and are one contact tracer.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, people are going to be concerned if they've been out there, you know, I mean, that's, I guess, sort of.
They have access to that by law, so those, and then just those folks do.
Yeah.
Yep. And we also, we, in one of the forums, we're telling them specifically. The, 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 the website on this is, meaning every matter has been updated, been launched. And I didn't give out the URL right now, and so Keith is there, but that's not publicly out there yet.
Sam, you have a question?
More just a comment. I, I, I think this is great. My only concern is, well, two concerns, that they might change due to availability, the kind of tests, right? And so I don't know if you have any insight on that, if they're going to consistently have the same kind of test or if it will remain the same. So there's just that. And you probably, you don't have to have the answer to that. I'm just putting that out there because I think that's going to be hard for parents to adjust if necessary. I know from my experience, my daughter is way more flexible letting somebody else do testing than me. So I think parents are going to struggle convincing their kids on Fridays to, to do that. And so we might be providing a little bit of extra help to parents on encouraging their students to do it. And then lastly, my daughter's preschool had a QR code last year that was super, super helpful and easy. And I just scanned it and I would put it in the information that I needed to put in. So I don't know if that's something, I know that's, you know, going in the opposite direction of, you know, tech savvy versus non-tech savvy, but I do think for a lot of people, to be able to just scan the QR code to get right to the website, that might be just another additional.
So, so that's helpful, Sam. What, where was the QR code to, like, where was it to scan? Was it on something?
Next to my door. So they just like, they printed it and.
Yep, yep, yep.
Needed it for everybody and I just pinned it next to my door and it was there. It reminded me that that's what I had to do. I actually had to do it every single morning last year. It's just check in, a symptom check in. So just as another additional resource for people or a way they access it easily.
Yep. So, so that's helpful because for families, right now, we're, you know, we're putting all the information out in the next 48 hours, you know, digitally, because that's the way to get out fast. But we will follow families with paper as well, you know, announcement in backpacks sort of thing. And that's a perfect place for that, for a QR code like that is on, is on the paper version as we go, as we go there. So we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That was a good suggestion.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, at some point, the system's not perfect. You know, there's plenty of flaws, but at some point we have to trust the parents and say, we'll give them a little bit of responsibility. Say, if you're testing your kid, you'll figure it out. Go on a website, put in the data, and that's basically it. I'm talking rocket science, Sam. We're just trying to get the data. And what I am interested in is, to Laura's point, is what percentage of, what we can do to raise that percentage of people that are taking the at-home test. And that's, I think, on us to help promote that and really schools to do the same. Say, hey, this is, this is important. This is what we're getting rid of. In lieu of that, this is what we need you to do.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I mean, I think it's really important just how as parents, you know, our parent body, families, our families, you know, to also be communicators.
Yes.
Because just like Melissa said, you know, kids don't always listen to their parents. Parents also listen to their peers, you know? And so they have parents out there, all viewed first of all, through your networks and social media or otherwise. But also other parents say, we're doing this. Have you signed up? Here's the link, you know? And the more we can get that community type of communication, it just, it just amplifies and, you know, amplifies and extends whatever we can do, you know? So I think that's, you know, the more we can develop that notion of having, or we use the word viral.
That's a good use of the word.
Yeah, I like that. No, that just, it just, you know, just helps get work. So anything folks can do and then your network can do, and you can tell them, tell them, support them in doing that, but that's very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Just one last thing. So, you know, we're, thank goodness, all this down, you know, our banner's going down and all of that. I'm hoping that the state, you know, we don't know it's going to stay down. We don't know what's coming, you know? I know you can't predict this, but, you know, I guess my hope is that the state and their, you know, my extension, that we will be able to move and change as needed, right? Like this feels very reasonable right now. And then?
Yeah. And I think what Jeff said already, which is probably one of the most important things tonight is, is we're, we're going to keep close eyes on this, you know? And if it's a classroom, you know, we'll get in there and figure it out, you know? And then we can rapid test. We have, we have, you know, we have tests everywhere, right? So we knew rapid, just like we did at Beeman, you know, or last year, we did it in some classes, you know? But the interesting about that is like, we're more, we had like call in the mobile testing unit, you know, last year. Now we can put it up in a day, you know? And so, you know, we've been good, really good, Jeff and I, in tracking those things, asking the principals, what's going on in this classroom. We can still do that. I mean, that is why, you know, it is important, you know, and I think I have a lot of faith in parents to report this. Folks haven't kept it to themselves, you know, it's called up, that sort of thing, nurses and secretaries. They've told folks, you know, we often, when we were using Maven, we often found out before Maven, it was even in Maven, right? You know, so, but we have to keep vigilant. We have to keep looking at patterns and then we'll act if necessary.
And I think what Jeff said, I just want to, Jeff, what you said about when you were going through doing test-in-state, that the majority of the kids tested positive were those with symptoms. You know, that's a useful piece of information, right? It sort of tells me as a parent that all these sort of, you know, symptomless kids are likely not, you know, not passing the virus or, you know, it sort of says there is some correlation between, you know, Jeff as a, as a nurse, you know, the nurse leaders, what he's seeing in the schools and, you know, sort of what we know. So that's very helpful.
Melissa, it's kind of a procedural question, but so this, these tests are available to all staff. So are you considering every single person that works for the school, a staff member?
Oh, yeah, every single person.
Custodians?
Yes, absolutely.
Substitute teachers that come in?
Um, yeah, if it's the first time someone showed up, probably not, but if it's someone who's six, regular, we have lots of regulars.
Yeah, substitutes are usually done regularly.
Like, we have Joe Fafaza, substitute at O'Malley, apparently, today or yesterday, okay? And for the first time. And, but I'm not sure he warrants a free rapid test quite yet. He's got to be a few more times before he went to. So, but, you know, so, yeah, so, but no, when I say that all, all.
Yeah, I was just curious.
They just have to sign up, you know, and so that's the thing. And at this point, it's custodians, you know, food service. And we'll be communicating tonight with, you know, certain, like transportation.
Yeah.
You know, we, we're talking about today that transportation doesn't have a real connection with the O'Malley front office, you know? Whereas the IT guys who are there do, you know? So we'll develop, we'll, we'll send, say, say, IT folks who work at O'Malley, sign up. They'll get theirs through the O'Malley office, but we'll send a different package down to, you know, Lori Francis and Cameron there.
Transit.
For the transportation staff, you know, to make it as easy as possible, that sort of thing.
Yeah, just want to make sure that we're getting complaints coming forward from any personnel that they can know or get at.
Yeah, yeah, all means all here and everyone has test available and as long as they'll sign up. Wait, Kylie wants to.
Okay, go ahead.
I think something that I want to bring it back down a little bit because we're talking about a lot about, okay, pool Monday, results Wednesday, shipped Tuesday, test home Friday morning. In the reality of a life of a Gloucester public school parent, I have two fully vaccinated kids who both participate in pool testing and will enroll in this program. So that means my kids will be tested in school on Monday and then they will be tested at home Friday morning. So if you put that into perspective of someone who was not part of a contact tracing scenario, which very likely there are children who have never had to, you know, have that. Your child is getting to be tested twice a week. So they go into the school week being tested, they go into the weekend being tested. That's something that has never been offered before. And it's something that is easy to enroll in, non-invasive, and offers options of the pool testing at school, which is a little bit public. And a lot of kids and parents have some concerns about that. And then the at-home rapid testing on Friday, which has an element of privacy. And I think a lot of the older kids, that is going to be a really big draw for them. And they're testing Friday morning, so that gives them, in theory, a few days, you know what I mean? And then we're testing them again on Monday. So it's sort of this continuous cycle of safety for our children. And I don't want the beauty of that to be lost on, you know, the program details and all that. Because we'll figure that out. We'll get that to work right. But having that, it's unprecedented. So I'm super excited about it.
That's a nice one.
Melissa, just one quick one. What's your confidence level for the accuracy in regards to false positives and negatives for antigen tests that they want?
I, I can't speak to the exact numbers of science behind that, but we know and we're very familiar with the fact that those, the rapid engine tests have shown to get more, you know, more and more accurate as it's gone along. When we first began, we first had the option to, with what became the finex test, we first had the option to do that, to use them in October, November of 2020. We chose not to at that point because it was pretty clear, pretty clear to us that point they didn't have a track record. They didn't have, they hadn't used enough to have any real data on their accuracy. But at this point, whether it's the finex one we use for in-school testing or now these, the iHealth ones, they've been used so much and so there's really good data on their accuracy. There are false, false positives and false negatives. Because that, we used to have a PCR follow-up with a rapid antigen. But at this point, that's not the common, the conventional wisdom or conventional guidance. So I don't know the exact numbers, but I think we're operating at very, very high. And, you know, it's not perfect, so.
But that's why you do a PCR pool test on Monday morning.
Exactly, right, right.
So then you have a PCR that, you know.
Yeah, that combination actually is really, really rich. You know, and I just, I wish we started with what Kylie said because Kylie did a great job of putting it in perspective. This is not, you know, unprecedented, unprecedented, and it is a tremendous advantage for our family and our staff. For all reasons, she just explained. And as I think you all said, Kylie, and I really appreciate it, it's like, we can figure out the details. We're going to figure out the details every step of the way for two years now, or almost two years. we can figure out the details, we're going to figure out these details every step of the way for two years now, or almost two years. And I just have a total, complete confidence in our team. You know, we've executed at the highest level, whereas over in school, you know, a year, you know, a year and a half ago, or test and stay, working with the kinks out. And our focus is to do a tremendous job on it. And I expect the same, I expect we'll do the same in this too.
Thank you to all of you.
Right.
And this would have been helpful if it had been in December that they worked this out, right?
Yeah.
Or that, because more people would have been informed.
Yeah. No, I think that's right. And, you know, what's amazing, still amazing, and I think this also gets lost, is, you know, the vaccines evolved incredibly quickly, you know? These tests have, you know, now they're more and more readily available. I mean, just the changes that all of this has been through is just, in one sense remarkable, in one sense just, you know, not to be believed and awful. We certainly, as I said before, learning and adjusting and, you know, going forward. Thank you, Kylie. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night. Okay, so we will move on to the subcommittee reports. And we have three filling and finance subcommittees on January 11th, January 13th, and January 26th. And Melissa and Chris Prince will give you the short version.
The short version.
So with regard to the meetings of January 11th and 11th and January 13th, the notes that I took, which were pretty extensive and detailed, are on my island at home and not with me here. So I am going to highly suggest that you watch the Zoom meetings if you're interested in all the detail of those departments. I can tell you once again that I am so beyond encouraged and satisfied with the level of detail and presentation from our staff in all the departments. I mean, each one just outdid the one before, but at the same time, we're all equally awesome. So there's no doubt that we have good leadership in our department heads. I think those first two meetings, we met with the elementary schools, special education, English learners, the high school, O'Malley, and IT. And a lot of detail being forward, like I said, I can't stress enough that if you are really interested in the budget that you will be building over the next six, five months, four months. And you really want to have an informed opinion in, on those budget priorities, to watch the Zoom meetings. Because even a report myself wouldn't give you all the detail or the detail that you would want to know if you were truly interested. And I can say that about tonight's meeting as well. So tonight we met and it was the first time that the budget was pretty much dropped in our laps. As far as we heard from all the department heads and the superintendent and Gary and Cody, and I'm sure many others, worked on this budget. And gave us the first, first sight of it and what it could look like or what it will look like from a very high level. Not a lot of detail, but we discussed, you know, the financial sections, which talked about salary adjustments and a budget summary. Just a little bit of detail, not going to go into a lot of it. We talked about insurance and dental insurance will likely go up approximately 6%. Or that's what we're going to budget this year. Because the trajectory has been about the same over the past years. There was one year that they went down a little bit, but then there's another year that it was a little bit higher. So the average was approximately 6%. And we're going to go with that number until we know more detail at the beginning of March from GIC. So that's a budget impact. We talked about the GTA salaries, and that impact is, you know, approximately a million dollars to the budget. We knew one of our priorities was to retain personnel and pay appropriately. So through those budget negotiations to discuss the main changes and be able to impact the newer teachers coming in and recognize the work that's been done for teachers that have been here longer. That impact to the budget is approximately a million dollars, and we'll be talking about that at some point, too. We talked about the, the budget that we have, and then we have the ESLE budget. So we're kind of operating with two different budgets. We have the ESLE budget that we will have this next coming year and the year after. You heard tonight from Amy Cam, all the wonderful work that's going on, just with the social and emotional part of it. And we've hired some positions that are in place this year, which we've heard how extraordinary they're being. Well, to be proactive going forward, which we will be, what's the word I'm using? Integrating those salaries into this budget that we're now developing. So that in two years from now, we don't have a big cliff in fiscal year 2025 with all the positions that we are utilizing right now. And we may not keep all these positions, but we know the four that we are integrating into next year's budget are a definite high priority. The detail in that is on the meeting as well tonight, if you want to read what each individual position is. So next year we'll capture those positions into our general fund as opposed to the ESLE grant that will be going away. And we had a great talk about out-of-district transportation. We talked about how the foundation budget, the foundation budget and the, the circuit breaker money is going to look like for the next coming year. We talked about professional development, some of it is being shifted to the ESLE grant. But the overall impact to the budget for next year was, I think, 1.350 million. 350, which is an approximate 2.96 budget impact from last year.
Including insurance.
Including insurance. And that number could change a little bit. There's going to be a little bit of adjustment. But if you hear and watch those meetings and learn about what we actually have for support in our schools now to address all these needs that are coming at us quicker than we want them to, especially because of COVID. We are doing tremendous work for our families and students through this budget in a, in a good way. And knowing that our budget increases over the year, we've had the goal of trying to stick with, you know, we have proposition two and a half. Knowing that tax payer money can only go up that much every year, we're trying to stay in that range. And I think at this point, they've been very successful in keeping that range. And when you hear all the detail and see all the detail to that budget, when the superintendent gives his presentation to all of us very soon, you're going to be very impressed with what is happening in our school for our families and our students. So watch the Zoom meetings. And that's all I have to report. Because there's so much more, but we would be here on our own. That's why we've got subcommittees, because we have the more detailed information. Okay, there is no action for tonight on the agenda. So discussion, other communication, all the new business. I don't think there's much to report on these Gloucester Veterans Filling Committee.
I did drive by today.
You do.
And you can see the foundation is above ground now, all of the cement given for it for the last one and a half years. And we said before, February, which is next week, we'll be starting to get back steel. Like a pretty deal, actually.
They'll be starting to what?
Oh, you're wrecked steel, steel.
That was amazing how big and wide it is, lengthwise.
Yeah, you really, you can see the footprint.
You see the footprint, yeah. It took pictures out, very impressed, like, there's a lot of good going on.
It actually looks like the shape that's been on the drawings, which is probably a good thing.
And it was very active. The big trucks were moving and everything.
Young kids, too.
Yeah, yeah. It was big, big steel trucks. Okay, I just have a couple of things I wanted to mention. One, I wanted to make sure people notice that we do not have a school committee meeting on the school vacation week. But we do want to have one on March 2nd, the following week, to keep our meetings manageable as we go forward and to take care of business. You know, in shorter meetings instead of having, you know, a marathon meeting the following week. I think it's helpful for the administration that comes to the meetings, the people that present have our full attention. And there's some, you know, important presentations that are going to happen over the course of March. So this bases them out. So we'll have a meeting March 2nd, March 9th, and March 2030, whatever.
Yeah, that'd be right.
Whatever it takes.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, second thing is, I've been asked by Councilor Gilman, the council president, to consider joining the city and the city council on a resolution to advocate for continuation of kind of this hybrid remote model of meeting, which according to the current dictate, it's going to expire at the beginning of April. So maybe along the way, somebody, you know, who makes those decisions might extend it, knowing that these meetings have been helpful and accessible to a lot of people. And maybe it's, still need more time before the public can actually join some of our meetings. We're, we're not going to change our format. We've been doing hybrid for a long time. But I'm going to pass, I'm going to send that to you folks to consider, and just read through between now and the next two weeks. And we'll gather some information and we'll talk about it next time. There's nothing, I don't think it's overly time sensitive right now on that. Did they vote it already? Not that I know of. No, no, I don't, I don't know what their timing was. But I know in terms of, just in general, it would be nice if there was the ability for the public to participate in our meetings. No matter where we are, and to also continue recording our meetings and broadcasting our meetings now that it's, you know, like just a much more participatory way of including the public.
Well, two things, to that point, I've signed on to it as the mayor. And I think it's important that even after COVID's longed on and finally did, we continue with at least Zoom, the Zoom option for public participation. Panels of meeting in person, boards and commissions, that's great, but the ratings are through the roof. And I just.
Relatively speaking.
A different topic, just, Ben Chair, and we had our first meeting, Chair, Vice Chair, and myself, Samantha virtually, and Kathy in the office. The first of many, we're going to try to do this at least every, twice a month. And then, as I mentioned before, quarterly with the President, Vice President of the Council. But I thought it was a great opportunity for us to talk about different concepts of where we're going and where we can go as a team. So if you want to add anything to.
No, it's just a, you know, a good way to kind of talk casually about things, nothing, you know, nothing overly operational and nothing policy. But just, you know, what's going on and how do we just have a casual and build relationships. So there's communication in case things can get headed off earlier. I think Jonathan used to meet with the mayor, but there was a real reason. And even though Jonathan did have outreach to everybody, but there wasn't a regular communication, and particularly with the new mayor. It's good to have some background, along with Jill Cahill was there as well as CIO. So Jill brought up a lot of good things about communication, which I thought was nice that the city is thinking that schools, you know, could really benefit from, you know, some better communication or kind of piggyback on some of the efforts that cities making. So, you know, things like that, that they can do. And if they're willing to help, it would be awesome to have resources or, or whatever that might help us amplify how good we're doing in schools and what's going on, or even just people with certain expertise that we might have better access to. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any other things to enter the business that they want to bring up? Yes.
Mayor, I don't know if you were able to, the pesticides question, I don't know if there's been any movement on the, whether the, the, you know, you gave back to us on what the policy is about pesticide in our school building.
You know, that's, that's a good point, too. I have not heard that. But I'll follow up with them, see what's going on.
Is that bill still active or is it long gone by now?
I don't know. I think at this point, it's just come.
It's just information.
Now it's become information because the Board of Health wanted it, you know, before they advocated for that. But then after doing the research, they did the research, the Board of Health. And I think it's good information for us to update and be aware of. Close the loop and not overly stressful.
Okay. So, will you go, Karen? Are you able to vote, please? Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Vino?
Yes.
Ms. Prince? Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Yes. Kathy?
Oh, sorry.
And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for those who attended and watched our meeting. Hopefully you enjoyed Amy Cam's presentation.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Sam.